Attention please. Welcome everybody to the zoning board meeting. If anyone got a cellphone, please put it on silent or vibrating not to interrupt the meeting. My name is Marty Aikens, I'm the chairman, this is the vice chairman, Mr. Reedell, Mr. Hamill, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien, board members, clerk, Mrs. Griffin, am I right, and the head of inspectional services, director, Mr. Carmichael behind me. If anyone's gonna testify tonight, please stand up and take an oath. If you're gonna speak, if you don't take an oath, you will not speak. You gonna stand up little guy? I wanna hear no. Mr. Chin?
Yes, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter's now in hearing. Yes, thank you.
I know a business, ZB A twenty-four fifty-five, one Edwin Street, are they here? Have a motion to deny please.
Mr. Chairman, ZB A twenty-four fifty-five, Dan Han, four A, sorry, I was pulling mine up, I was pulling mine up, Varian, so enclosed the three balconies attached to the townhouses, above the garage on the premise, one Edwin Street Quincy, and make a motion to deny.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor? All right. Oh, some will. And the reason for that is, this is about the fifth time we've done this, they didn't show up the last meeting, they were told to show up at this meeting, and they're not here, so, they didn't even get to present their case again. ZB A twenty-four sixty-six, one seventy Rota Street, Adam Kepzinski, for a Varian special permit floodplain, to add a third floor on the existing dwelling on the premises, number one seventy Rota Street, yap, there representative here. Name and address for the record please.
Good evening, my name is Andres Bernal, address at seven fifty-four VFW Parkway, business address, West Roxbury.
Why don't you, I got a new, a new paper, and it seems to me there's like, three different things on it?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so, about a month ago, we, we were here, and, the, it seemed that the comments were mostly aesthetic, and we were trying to, essentially, if you look at what we offered here, the proposed left elevation, and the three, we essentially devised three different options, and I think there were concerns about how this elevation seemed like a, like, it felt like a three-story structure, so we wanted to make sure that it didn't feel like that, so, it seemed that the best option, and I think this is what happened last, last month, was to essentially devise three different, or a couple of options, so we can hopefully, you know, sort, select one of them, and, and move forward. So let me just, oh.
No, 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 I was just, I was just looking at these, and, and, just, my opinion right off the top of looking at these, is the third page, looking at the front, I mean, you got, you got dormers on it, which we asked you to do, and make it look like a two-and-a-half story, which it really is, 'cause you got dormers on that, so, and it's not going up on the front three floors. We have people coming in front of us, one on third floor, and that's why, we even said to you a couple of times, that you, you can't, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta go by what we're gonna do here, and there's a couple dormers, I said, you can come back with a couple dormers, I think we all talked about that, make it look right, if you look at page three on the, the new one he gave us.
Yeah, you would see at the bottom right, there's A one point zero B, I think that would be, that would be the option.
There is guys.
Yeah, so, so what we did here, we, we essentially rotated the gable, and that allowed us to, again, looking at the left elevation, allowed us to create that sense of, of a two-and-a-half story.
And it really is, it's just, it's a two-and-a-half story with, with a couple dormers on it, and, and it gives that look that I was looking for.
But you have multiple options.
Even with the neighbors, yeah, there's three there.
We, we did have multiple options.
First, I'm just saying, for what, the looks for their neighbors, you know, if you look at two.
But, yeah, there's the, the first one is more of an iteration of what we had presented first, where, where we try to essentially, you know, let's call it hide the chimney, and then on the third floor, there's a, a little bit of an overhang to capture that chimney. The second option is more of a hip roof, so, so if you look at the roof plan, at the bottom right, you, you see that, that now we have pitches in all directions, again, to try to help us get, get that, that roof line down, and then, the third option is where we rotated the gable, and, and, you know, frankly, it's one of the simplest options, it does take the, the chimney, and it sort of, let's call it, it buries it into the wall, and that, that way, we're not having to deal with it, and it's not, it's not visible.
I, I think, just looking at this, you know, I mean, you know, I want the neighbors looking at three-story house, and, and they shouldn't be, they should be looking at a two-and-a-half story.
Looking at them on three.
Yeah, I'm looking at this one here, this one here, which is this here, in other words, that's what you're gonna see in the rear.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, it's got a dormer, that's what you're gonna see in front, dormer, and you're gonna see it inside, so it almost, it, it's, it's a two-and-a-half story with some dormers.
Don't they, option three?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I could be wrong, you guys speak up, whatever you think, I mean, you could think differently.
What was, what was, what was the owner's?
I, I think that, that would be the.
Well, the, yes, this was the, the second preferable, the first one, that's where going in the beginning, but this one was, you know, we were just, you know, but.
Close second.
Close second, okay.
But for this one, the next option, that we preferred, but I was to put the solar by columns, so.
All right, that's another part of it, yes, the solar.
Marty loves solar, so.
There you go, we're back up, they've got it.
Yeah.
All right, you're clicking, right? Johnny gonna put that on for you?
I'll see. That's what we asked for.
That's what we asked for.
Yeah, no questions.
All right, you can have a seat. I'll leave this here if anyone wants to look at, is there anyone here for this project here tonight, wanna speak? One seventy Rota Street, second call, third call, qualified, hearing closed, not in change to D P W, correct?
No, in favor from, or Council McCarthy.
Oh, Council McCarthy, yeah, I want to.
From Council David McCarthy, Ward one city council, dear board members, again, my apologies for not being able to attend this evening, I do support the expansion of one seventy Rota Street, the third floor addition sounds very positive, but I do question the two bathrooms on the third, will each be a full bath, building height is fine, neighborhood is dense, so size and home must fit in the neighborhood of Rota Street, I think the expansion of many smaller homes in the neck is wonderful as long as they blend in with the neighborhood. Again, I'm for the positive developments in regards to one seventy Rota.
Thank you. Is there anyone opposed around the side? Second call, third call, qualified, hearing closed, I'll be voting for, motion with one point O B.
Option three?
Option three.
Option three.
Option A one point O B.
Do we want to revise the wording on the approval, because it does say third floor to the existing.
Yeah, it's not gonna, it's, it's, it's a, it's a two-and-a-half story with, with two dormers.
From the agenda, needs to be altered.
Yeah, and we'll put that.
But I couldn't change it because that's.
No, we'll change it.
Because of the re-adverti, yeah, no, I'm just saying, like, on the approval, let's just make sure it's specifically stated as two-and-a-half stories, not, not a third story.
With two dormers.
So that somebody doesn't hold that in front of us in a few weeks.
Next week, next week there's one.
I got you.
Yeah, you got the motion, right?
Yeah.
So vice chairman, you're up. Oh, change it, all right, we can change it to, two-and-a-half story, all right, go ahead, you're up. Everyone else set?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, ZB A twenty-four city sixty-six, Adam Kepzinski, for a Varian's and special permit floodplain, to add a second and, and a half story, or add a half story to the existing dwelling, with dormers, on the premise numbered one seventy Rota Street Quincy, and make a motion to grant the Varian's special permit and floodplain.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor? All right. Oh, some will. Chairman, if you could sign these. All right.
Did you, Kathy, did you send the, deny, so to sign that?
Yeah. We just did, I think you just did.
No, that was the approval.
Oh, I didn't, I don't know why, I forget, I denied or withdrawn.
I think we all, we did, we probably did.
Mr. Chairman, I gotta make a motion away.
Yeah, I know, we'll do, I got that as the last thing before the meeting anyway. ZB A twenty-four eighty-one, new P, Piva, for a Varian's to construct a single-family dwelling with the attached two-car garage, upon completion demolishing the existing single-family dwelling, ten Saint Germain Street. Yap, there a representative here?
Yes, sir. My name is Manuel Piva.
Yep.
The applicant, address at twenty varsity place, Ridgewater, Massachusetts, I represent the owner, Dale Hausman, who is here tonight.
Yep.
We have continued a request of the board from last month, and the public portion and the presentation was complete, was completed and closed, this was continued based on members of the board wanting to walk the site, to visibly see the sightlines. Since that meeting, there's been a subsequent submission to the zoning board, all in your packets, and what was submitted was, number one, a letter to the D P W addressing all their comments and concerns, I understand that that's not needed to the building permit, but we had time to do that with the continuance, so all those comments have been addressed. The second item that was, was entered is a fence line sketch, showing the proposed fence that would be down the west side property line, at six feet tall, tapered at four feet tall at the street line, and four foot tall at the shoreline. The third updated amendment filing was the floodplain site plan, there was a question at the last meeting, where the floodplain actually was in representation of the home, so that was submitted, and the last item, which was part of the presentation, but now filed in the application, was the average setback, three hundred feet, in both directions of the shoreline, showing that the proposed house meets that average setback. I have my full presentation with me, if any members of the board want me to pull that back out, but I was trying to just keep it short and sweet for the board.
No, I got, I got a couple questions out.
Yes, sir.
From the original plan, did you move the house forward from the original plan?
Yes, the house was moved forward for a couple of reasons. The first reason was, the width of the house was expanded, and the reason the width of the house was expanded, when we started to work with the architect on the plans, the bedrooms were nine feet in width, which are very narrow, so we took the opportunity to expand the width of the house, to, to meet the both side yard setbacks of thirteen feet. We held it thirteen feet on the backside, and it's fifty in on the other side, because that's gonna be the front entrance, so we had the stairway and the walk on that side. The depth of the house was also increased, and the reason that was increased was the garage, when we looked at the size of the garage at twenty by twenty, or twenty-four by twenty-four, when you put in pickup truck and SUV, and you want storage ahead of that, it was just too narrow, so we added that storage in the front of the garage, and.
But, but when I talked to your client, I went down and saw the house, and we talked originally, before the first one came to us, and he wanted to be equal with his neighbor. Now all of a sudden, I'm looking at this, and it's like, six feet, seven feet further than it was before.
Right, so what we did, sir, when we did some research between that submission and this submission, we found that there was, this board had granted a one hundred forty-five foot front yard setback to the adjacent home, so in that presentation that we initially put, we matched that one forty-five, since it was a precedence on the other butter, so we had the one forty-five and all the sightlines, and that was part of the testimony last month.
All right, I'm gonna tell you my opinion, my opinion was, you guys get in a little match between yours, and all of a sudden, you says, okay, if you don't want me to do that, where it is, it's even gonna go more forward, that's just my opinion. I know you went down, we saw the site, but I thought in the beginning, this thing was all, his whole thing was being equal with his neighbor, I should have the right to be equal with his neighbor, and I agreed with him, but not to be forward on his neighbor, I don't think that's fair, when we sat down and tried to figure this out for him and helped him, now, these four guys could vote yes, that's the way it is, I think that should have been set where their house is, but I don't know why, it's almost like people getting mad at each other and they're adding stuff.
Like, like I said, we found a pre-existing setback allowance, and we found in the code, where you're allowed to go three hundred feet either way, for an average setback, it complies with that back setback, it's the front setback, as you know, that we're asking for the Varian's on.
My opinion would be, if I did vote for this, it would be, it would be the same, same dimension as, as your neighbor, that would be my recommendation to the board, too. I mean, we did this, and it's been going back and forth, because you and the neighbor don't get along together, and I get, she wanted you even back further than when you had it, then the last submission says, I guess that they want it where it originally was, which was like, five or six feet back, where it originally was, now it's six feet forward, so I think there's a little rift going on here between the neighbors, it's gonna end up in court anyway, and you guys are gonna fight it out, but, what's fair is fair, I mean, you know, she's been there that whole time, he's building a new house, I think he could go equal with his neighbor and build his house, and everything will be fine, but I'm gonna put that in the record, if, if we get to that point, so. Any questions?
No, I went down and looked at it, I was just wondering where the, the structure would, yeah, where the structure would sit in regards to it, I, I don't think there's, we don't protect people's front view, we don't protect, we haven't, we have no sunlight clauses, you're already, you know, granting a Varian's for the, for the front setback, I'm not gonna dictate where they put their home, so, I'll be in favor.
I'm just saying, that was the original plan.
No, I get it, I understand a hundred percent.
No, I, I went down and looked at it, we, it's gone back and forth, this is months and months, there, there are no statutes that say, blocking sunlight, there are no statutes saying, you're putting a shadow on me, or you're ruining my view, so, I'd be in favor of the current design.
All right. So Chin?
Yes, I think that the design should be where they propose to be equal with the other neighbor, I think that was fair, I think that's reasonable, that you don't need to be behind it, or, don't need to be in front of it or ahead of it, my feeling was, it was fair to be at the same, same point where all the other houses are, at that, I don't know if I'm making sense, but.
Yeah, I know, the other house is like, ten feet even back further, that's why they wanted it back further, and I get that reason, too, but that's not what we're here for, to bring it even back more, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, equal, I'd, I'd say it as equal, that's, that's the, the way that I feel. I don't want him in front, and I, you know, he, he doesn't necessarily have to be behind, but, equal is where I, where I see feet.
All right, two of us gotta go their way, or one of them gotta come this way, so we're gonna have to figure this out.
Are you willing to go back to, equal to the, to your butter to the right?
I'm glad, I'll tell you the reason why.
Okay, we can vote.
Please state your name, state your name, come up and state your name and address for the record.
It's Dale Hausman, ten Saint Germain Street. Originally, when I did my plans, when I had Manny come down and look property, I was originally gonna wanna go up further, I didn't know there was a Varian's that you couldn't go, you could only go so far off the street, but I was actually much further in front of him, and then what I did, I looked at, I said, you know, I wanna be a fair neighbor, and I said, okay, let me put things together, I'll put the houses together, and you know, we've gone back and forth, and we discussed it, and we're just gonna come to an agreement, and I thought about it, and, and I just said, you know something, when I, when I put the lot, the, I put the sticks down and marked it, and I said, even at the, the one thirty-nine which we originally at, I'm looking at trees, I'm looking at my neighbor's fence, I said, you know, I bought this property for the view, and I'm only asking for six feet further from where it originally was, so I'm not looking at my, my neighbor to the left, at four Saint Germain, at his fence, his tree, I just wanna be a little bit further, so, you know, he wanted me back in front of, back of his house, and I'm not really wanting in the back of my house, 'cause he's really not gonna look, lose any view, I mean, as I explained.
And you're equal with him, you're gonna lose a view, you're saying?
I'm gonna be looking at a tree, and I'm looking at a fence.
Your trees, your trees.
Huh? Not my trees, my neighbor's tree, and I agree, looking at my neighbor's fence, well, with, with his stairway coming down, so, and that's the reason why I was asking for this six further, and like I said, originally, I was probably asking for like, one fifty or one fifty-five originally, but I said, I'm gonna, I decided to move it back, but now, I, when I went out there and marked everything out, I actually wanted to move it a little bit further, and that's six feet that we're asking for.
I know, but me and you sat in our property, and we talked, and you said, I wanna be a good neighbor, I wanna equal with his, so I can go, and we can do this, and we can get this built.
Mm-hmm, but, after, like I said, after I went through everything, and I marked everything out, I put everything in stakes, I put strings out there, marked everything out, I said, no, I'm still gonna be looking at a tree, and I'm gonna be looking at my neighbor's deck, and the stairs coming down, and that's the reason why I asked for the extra seat, six feet in front.
You're gonna have a deck, you're gonna have two decks out back.
No, 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 my neighbor's deck.
No, but you're gonna have two decks out front, looking that way, twelve feet, that were ten.
But even when I'm on front of it, I'm still looking at his deck.
From, from the attic, from your second floor?
No, from my first floor, from my first floor, I'm still gonna be looking.
In your house.
In my, in my house, on the deck, if I'm on the back of the porch, whatever, how I marked it, is that I'd be still looking at the, my neighbor's deck, and his stairs coming down, and a tree, and I just said, I looked at, I said, you know, if I have to spend all this money, then I'd like to have a view that I can have, and as I said before in the last meeting, if we're looking at this since the clock, and we're both looking from his porch to my porch, looking straight out twelve o'clock, you know, all of the view is down at nine o'clock.
Of course it is.
And, you know, something, and what I, I'm looking at that, and the whole thing is, if he, if I put the house where it is, at the one forty-five, you know, he's not gonna have the nine o'clock view, he's gonna have like, maybe a ten o'clock view, so he's gonna have ten in all this over here, so, and that's what I was looking for, so, and I thought the one forty-five would be fair, and like I said, I just wanna spend all this money, and I'll have the view that I wanna pay for, and that's all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I mean, we had an agreement when, when I went down, and we talked to him, and he had, I thought those two even had an agreement, he could put his house there, they weren't happy, but they said, I get it, you wanna build a house, too, so, I, I think it should be equal to the neighbor's house, I mean, just, there's a beautiful view there, I mean, you couldn't ask them all where his property is, it's right on the ocean, you know, and he's gonna have a nice fire pit down there in the front and all that stuff, where you hang around, I mean, I just think it's too much, I think it's too much, just take away from the neighbor like that, I think they should be at the same, same level, if we're gonna let him put a house way down there, it should be the same level, I, I just, usually I bend, I don't wanna bend in this, because I had an agreement with one of the neighbors, and all of a sudden, this thing's been going on for five months because of it, 'cause they can't come up with an agreement, which, maybe we should have just voted on the first one, it would've been over, right?
Sounds like we're gonna be voting on this one.
Well, yeah, one way or the other, but if we can't come to agreement either, I Well, yeah, one way or the other, but if we can't come to an agreement either, I guess we're not... I don't know what you wanna do.
Six feet?
Yeah.
What if you just cut it in half and did it at three?
Yeah, that's fine, Marty. Fair enough.
It's gonna be one appeal anyway.
Yeah, let them fight it out.
We have an agreement, right?
Yeah, move it to three feet?
We have an agreement.
Yeah, we got an agreement, right? Three feet?
I still think it should be equal for making...
It's gonna go to equal future.
I'll vote on equal, fine.
All right, equal, put it on. Have a motion, Brian?
You want to equal, right?
ZBA twenty-four eighty-one, Manuel Piva, for variance to construct a single-family dwelling with a detached two-car garage upon completion demolishing the existing single-family dwelling on the premise number ten Saint Germain Street Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance with, at what's the...
One thirty-nine.
At one hundred and thirty-nine feet.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, I have something on the motion. We talked about dropping the fence down to four feet. And what... Where is that?
Street level.
No, down here. You're gonna do it in the front, too, he said.
Yeah, so on the plan, there's a red line versus a green line?
Yeah, where is that from the house?
All right, that should be shown on there. So if you look at where the abutment deck is, it's about six feet beyond that?
So it's going all the way...
It drops down.
It's going all the way out through the decks.
Correct.
All right. I'd like to amend that, that the four-foot section goes at the house level, and then it comes to four feet because it's got two decks there. I think it'll go six feet, and then it'll get down to four feet.
So where, at the end of the house?
At the end of the house would be the fence line to drop the four feet.
So, just to reiterate, variance to construct a single-family dwelling with an attached two-car garage upon completion demolishing the existing single-family dwelling on the premise number ten Saint Germain Street with the home starting at one hundred and thirty-nine feet, as well as fence, the four-foot section of fence beginning at the end of the house.
At the end of the house, not the...
At the end of the dwelling, not the...
Yeah, not the decks, correct. It's been second, and motion's been talked about. Is that it? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, so move. All right, thank you.
Can I decide one thing also?
Yeah.
And I understand you guys have a fence. Okay, and originally when we talked, you know, I asked for a fence between us, the original one from back in July, is that the house just have a deck at the end of the deck, not the house? Because this way, we both have our privacy, because we'll still be looking at each other on our decks. So I'm asking, just asking for the end of the deck.
Because you got, you have two decks right there. You've got two twelve-foot patios there. You're gonna be on your patio there.
Right. What I'm saying is that we'll still be looking at each other.
And they're gonna be on the ground out there.
Okay.
In their house, looking at a four-foot fence. I even think that stinks. Personally, I think it stinks, you putting it in there. I think it would've stopped back at your house.
Okay.
But that's my opinion.
And, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, one second, one second.
I was gonna say, now's Dad's show. He's gotta see it.
He's gotta see it. He voted no. Say yes. All right, we gotta... Oh, all right, ten Saint Germain, all right. Further under tonight's agenda, and the new business, ZBA twenty-four eighty-eight, Kyle Costa, co-owner for variance and finding to construct a single-level addition spanning the rear of the structure on the premise number thirty-five Meadow Street. Just Costa?
Name and address, go.
Kyle Costa, thirty-five Meadow Street.
Why don't you go through the plan and tell us what you want to do? Back of your house.
So our house, so we're looking to add on to move our living room to the back of the house because right now, I have two kids, wife, who are just on top of each other. So we're looking to remove the deck, go back. I think it's about twelve feet in the width of the house. And we're gonna move our living room to that backside to give us some more space in the house. It does encroach on the rear variance by nine inches. We'll be at nineteen-two instead of twenty. But yeah, we're really just looking to get more space in the house. I've talked to all the neighbors. Everybody seems to be on board. Everybody's okay with it.
All right, come down. You have a beautiful house there, and you took care of it, it looks nice.
Thank you.
You got a nice backyard there, too. You showed me what you're gonna do. I think you're gonna fix our house, and I'll be voting in favor. I think it's pretty nice.
Thank you.
You gonna take any... I have no questions.
No, I just wanna know, any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions.
All right, you can have a seat, Kyle. Is there anyone who wanna speak in favor of this? In favor?
Good evening. Debbie Riley, nine Landgrane Street.
Can you tell me your address again?
Nine Landgrane, L-A-N-D-G-R-A-N-E. It's not very often you guys get them so easy. It's a great family. They're just trying to stay in the neighborhood. They're doing something very reasonable. It's owner-occupied. Doesn't get any easier than this. Be good to keep them in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike Kelly, ten Meadow Street. And I just reiterate with the last name he said, he's a good family. It's a nice house. They've done a great job of improving the house and the neighborhood, and so I hope you...
Yeah, he did a nice job doing the house. Looks very nice. I was in it, even, he brought it in.
It's not as hard as when you were up here, you know?
Yeah.
We got it done, eventually.
Is there anyone else like speaking favor? Second call, third call, qualify hearing closed. DPW, they have reviewed the project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed around the side? First call, second call, third call? No, I'll be voting in favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
Oh, I go ahead. Have a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
ZBA twenty-four eighty-eight, Kyle Costa, co-owner for a variance and finding to construct a single-level addition spanning the rear of the structure on the premise number thirty-five Meadow Street Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance and finding.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Polls, so move. Uh, nope, not yet. Could you please step forward, one Edwin?
Are you one Edwin?
Yep. Come on up.
You're all set, Kyle.
You guys wearing hair again, second time, so we voted to deny.
We denied.
We denied.
The case was called earlier.
We called you at six o'clock. And then you didn't come in till like six, whatever, twenty or whatever. So we already called, so the board voted five oh to deny. All right? Thank you. Could I have a motion to waive the reading, please?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to waive the reading of the previous minutes from January twenty, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Polls, so move. Brian, I'm gonna hand you the mic. You got the chair. We gotta vote for Chairman.
I will be calling John Barry.
All right, call her.
It's been an honor to serve next to you, my friend.
Well, you're welcome.
I was never gonna pass any of this.
Hello, Ms. Kathleen. Hi, Ms. Johnna, you are on speaker with the board, the zoning board of appeals, and we're going to enter into the election of the officers.
Yeah, here. All right, Brian, you have the floor.
Make them nominate, right?
Stan?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Martin Akins as chairman.
Second.
Second.
I accept.
Any other nominations for chairman? First call, second call, third call closed?
Cast one ballot.
Cast one ballot.
Done. Thank you. And Mr. Hamel, I'd like to, I mean, Mr. Hamel, Mr. Chin. We got, see what, see how conversation went this week, guys? Conversation went on the board. I'd like to, Mr. Hamel as vice president, vice chairman.
Second.
Mr. Chin or Mr. Hamel?
Mr. Chin.
Mr. Chin.
Mr. Chin. I said, I was talking to Mr. Hamel. Okay, Mr. Chin. This conversation went on three times.
Making no motion to nominate Mr. Chin as vice chair?
Second.
All right. One, do anyone have other nominations for vice chair? Second call, third call closed?
Nomination's closed.
Nomination's closed, one ballot. I need a motion for a clerk. Mrs. Griffin.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to nominate our clerk Kathleen Griffin, who's been amazing for us.
I know. She's awesome, the best. Look at all this new stuff. No, I'm telling you, look at this.
No knock on our past chair.
No, no, no. No, there's just some new things coming over now. We're starting to get like...
No knock on those past performance.
They worked their butts off for us. We were lucky, we wouldn't have survived without them, believe me. I know. Second?
Second.
Second. Is there any other nominations for clerk? Second call. Other nominations for clerk, third call closed. I'll vote one ballot. One vote. Congratulations, Dan Clark, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we motion adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appose?
Thanks, Johnna.
Thank you.